Calling the Newcastle City Council regular meeting of Monday, December 5th, 2023. Please rise to your pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get approval of the agenda?
Now, where I move that we approve the agenda.
Second. I have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. May I get approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of Monday, December 5th, 2023?
Where I move that we approve the minutes. Second.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Any nominations for recognition?
Yes, Your Honor, I would like to...
No, go ahead.
No, Madam.
No, you said it first, go.
Well, I just was... I would always say ladies first. Your Honor, I would like to nominate the community choir with the directive by Mr. Walter Spay for the marvelous job they did at the Catata. And I would like to nominate the Weston County Arts Council and especially their Community Theater Committee for the marvelous job they did at the play, the Christmas Carol.
Good, Mayor, I would like to nominate... I have been asked to nominate the Sage Motel, Wes and Chloe Berkeley, on the improvements that they've made to their motel. There's pictures here of a little greenhouse.
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah.
So they're continuing to improve that area. And I guess it can be used for, it says, an amazing greenhouse. We'll have seating area and plants, more to come. gazebo, sauna, couple of mother-in-law suites. I don't know whether you can put your mother-in-law on there when you're saying that. I don't know. And also, he, I guess Wes has started a new business with curbing, decorative curbing, strong-bite. It's called Compound Curbs. So I have that. I also would like to recognize, and I don't know what it is, but grazers for the way that they handled the children last week when we had our incidents in the school system. My daughter-in-law, I mean, my daughter was very, very impressed with how they took care of the kids. They gave them all hot chocolate and everything. And also, I would like to recognize the PD and other law enforcement, all of the ones that were involved in the way that it was handled. I know the teachers said that it was... I said, "So how did the law enforcement do it?" She said, "Amazing." So I just want to...
Any questions? And that's all to... Any other nominations? Okay. We have one certificate of recognition for the Newcastle Executive Chamber of Commerce for the Mayan parade. So thanks for bringing us downtown. It was another successful year. Thank you. That's for you, Wes.
Thanks.
Henry, do you want to introduce Jenny? Do you want to introduce some Jennies?
Actually, no. Let Jenny introduce herself, because I can never pronounce her last name.
Jenny Waznisky, I just got on the chamber board. And then was asked, not, uh, volunt- volunteer to be appointed secretary as well. So I hope to enhance the chamber and the activities and build the business aspect and supporting the business aspect around the chamber. And if you notice, the Facebook page has been a little more active. It's, I've been trying to post things for the local businesses, but I have a lot of ideas that have been thrown at Henry and the rest of the board. Hopefully, you know, the next couple of months, you'll see some action.
Good for you.
Yes, thank you.
Citizens Business in writing, we have First Northern Bank of Wyoming, application for deposit funds. Mayor and City Council pursuant to the requirements of Wyoming Statute 94-818, former application is made by personal bank of Wyoming, a corporation organized and existing under the laws of Wyoming, having its office and principal place of business in the city of Buffalo, Wyoming, in the county of Johnson, with a branch office in the county of Weston and the state of Wyoming, to designate the City of Newcastle Depository. The bank is to provide sufficient collateral as required by the City of Newcastle's investment policy to be assigned to and deposited with the treasurer of the City of Newcastle as security for the safekeeping and prompt payment of all public monies that may be deposited within by said treasurer and for the faithful performance of its duties under the law of such depository. By the order of the Boards of Director, President, and CEO, and I cannot pronounce the name, Nicholas Tom.
Your Honor, I move that we approve the application for deposit public funds by First Northern Bank.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Citizens Business, two, Tanya Christensen, Green Business's Cap'n the Bottle, 24-hour catering permit. We now have a 24-hour catering permit that under and by virtue of the provisions of Section 12-4-502, subsection B of the State of Wyoming Alcohol Beverage Control Laws, the City of Newcastle, County of Weston, State of Wyoming, in consideration of the sum of $20 paid by Tanya Christensen, Green Business's Cap'n the Bottle, of the City of Newcastle, County of Weston, hereby license permits in all grounds, Tanya Christensen, owner of Cap'n Bottle, to sell alcohol and malt beverages in and upon the premises of the Weston County Event Center for an event more specifically described as follows: fundraiser benefit for the Wyoming Alum Conservation Camp. This license for catering permit is for the term of one day only, beginning on 9:00 a.m. of the 6th of January and ending on 9:00 a.m. the 7th of January, 2024.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the 24-hour catering permit for Tanya Christensen and Cap'n Bottle, starting at 9:00 a.m. on the 6th to 9:00 a.m. on the 7th of January, 2024. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion?
Well, I hopefully raise lots of money as fundraiser.
Yes. It's for two employees, I believe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Citizens Business in writing, number three, plumbing and electrical license approval for 2024. The bombing has requested plumbing licenses for the 2024 calendar year. All fees have been paid and proof of insurance and bond have been provided. Plumbing contractor, master plumber, power grid, air conditioning, master plumber, J. Drake, journeyman Brett Osman, Steve Sales, limited mechanical apprentice, Aaron Williams, Jason Walker, and Jose Zavala. Anderson Plumbing and Contracting, master plumber Clay Anderson, apprentice plumber Nathan Anderson. Whoops Plumbing and Heating, master plumber Scott Hartman, journeyman plumber Dan Hartman. Black Hills Plumbing and Heating, master plumber William Semenera. Apprentice plumbers Stephen Phelps, Sean Holland, Michael Peterson... Patterson, I'm sorry, thank you. Mountain View Plumbing and Heating, master plumber Brian Olson, apprentice plumber Rob Waznisky. Twenty-one Electric Plumbing, master plumber H.B.A.C., Aaron Napolitano, apprentice Christopher Bray, Josh Kaufman, and Colleen Varner. And then Summit Plumbing and Heating LLC, master plumber David Hopkins, apprentice plumber Robin King, Cameron Richardson, Michael Haynes, Sam Hasty. Black Hills Gas Holdings LLC, limited plumber, Don Munger, Gas Piping, limited plumber James Curran. Black Cat Construction, limited plumber, Jeff Sorch, Water and Sewer Lines, Wayne's Heating and Air, limited plumber Wayne Anderson, Gas Piping. And then Culligan Soft Water of Hot Springs Inc., limited plumber, Richard D. Olsted, Soft Water Services. The following request of limited mechanical plumber license for the 2024 calendar year. Always There Heating and Cooling, limited mechanical license, Timothy Army. Comfort Systems Heating and Cooling Inc., limited master mechanical license, Kerry Whilling, Gas Piping. Precision Mechanical, limited mechanical plumber's license, Stephen Vindam, apprentice, Brian Morgan, Ryan Horn, Robbie Melton, Patrick Sloan, Johnny Reed, Austin Youngler. Climate Solution Inc., limited mechanical plumber, Nathan Kins. Tessers Inc., limited mechanical license, David D. Soldato. Sorry, I'm approaching these names here. The following have requested electrical license for the 2024 calendar year, and all fees have been paid and proof of insurance and bond have provided. For Homestead Work Electrical, master electrician Howard Vogt. Pro Electric Inc., master electrician Curtis Judy. Journeyman electrician Charlie Lynn Smith, Keith Norman King, Tyler Finney. Apprentice electrician Cody Rady, Tyler Judy, and Mason Bender. Twenty-one Electric, master electrician Joshua Liggett, journeyman electrician Ryan Urenovich, Brad Boylan, apprentice electrician Hayden Harps. Rick's Electric, master electrician Rick Phillips, journeyman electrician Trenton English, apprentice electrician James Davis, Kate Engel. Aero Electric Inc., master electrician Richard Andrews, journeyman electrician Brett James Williams, apprentice electrician is Bryce Kirkens. White Construction LLC, master electrician is Brian Swan, apprentice electrician Ethan Baker. Pittman Electric, master electrician Gary Pittman Jr., and journeyman electrician Dustin Aldridge, Journey Robbins, apprentice electrician Sean Alba.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the plumbing and electrical licenses for 2024. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say, if we've got all these many people doing things in Newcastle, of course, we're getting in good shape.
I also want to make, just like I did last year, we just need to make sure that these are the only ones that are licensed, that are on this list, where they go to work, so.
How would we know?
We don't know.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Citizens Business in writing, number four, Melissa Stoudt, New Street Memorial. Dear Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, after listening to the minutes of the Newcastle City Council meeting of December 4th, 2023, I'd like to comment on the request made by Councilman John Bottz on behalf of the absent Pastor McBone. He was speaking on behalf of McBone about putting a memorial at the park on top of Main Street that would reflect anti-abortion and anti-death. I would like to express my concerns for this. I feel that if the city alone, or a group, club, organization, or person, to post a plaque of memorial at a park at the top of Main Street or on any city property, then you are essentially setting a precedent, allowing everyone in giving approval to post plaques and memorials on all city property. I would like to suggest that the pastor displayed his memorial on his church property, which also has an open view to motorists from two major roadways. I would hate to see our beautiful parks become a billboard for every care, concern, and belief in the world. The point is not that I am against abortion or...
You have to mention.
Yes, thank you.
You have to mention.
That has nothing to do with it. And I want to be clear on that subject. Please take this in consideration when making a decision about this matter. Thank you in advance, Melissa Stoudt, Newcastle citizen.
Your Honor, is this something we could turn over to the Parks Committee and they could research it and come back to us?
Well, it was...
She makes a good point, but, you know...
Yeah, it was also something that Madam Gray, Delver, thank you to see it, because a lot of these parks are donated by family members and citizens. And they have, like, some kind of maybe outline of what they would approve of and not approve of.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I, we've been researching, but we cannot find anything yet. It's going to take a little time. Files are a little disorganized, so we're still looking.
That land was donated by First State Bank?
Yes, and materials were donated by First State Bank, the City of Newcastle, and the Bonner Constitution Council, in labor to develop the park.
Pastor Bowlen's here, if he wants to speak to it. Would you like to speak to it, sir?
I would, if I could.
Please, sir.
First of all, I want to make the record clear, this is not on my behalf. This is from the Weston County Right to Life Group, of which there are 58 people in our Right to Life Group that has made this request. I believe this monument to life will enhance the park. I don't fret in Weston County too much about other things that we might not agree with wanting to have items put on that property that we wouldn't agree with. I don't think we would be the Iowa State Capitol that allows statues to Satan to be put in their midst. But if that case would come up, we wouldn't necessarily make this a permanent fixture if it's placed on a granite stone like the one at Gillette is, that it can be moved. It isn't going to be something that we can't deal with later if it's necessary. We are simply making this request based on the fact we believe Weston County of Newcastle is a majority pro-life area of our state. Our state itself is very pro-life. And so that's why we're asking to beautify. It's already a beautiful park, this would not diminish its beauty. You've seen the monument, it's a very beautiful one, they've got one in Gillette. You know, she's concerned about placing things. Well, I know that the cemetery isn't that city property. And we do have a cross up there. We do have a memorial there for our veterans, they, so on and so forth. Nobody's tried to come and do anything that's against what we believe, I don't suspect, at least in my 33 years of living here. So that would be the thing I want you to recognize. This isn't me, I'm just the chair of the Right to Life Group. And so we just honorably request your consideration. And if you say yea, we're very happy. If you say no, we'll continue to search for a place where we can make it visible to the people who come through our beautiful city. So thank you for your consideration.
Hey, Pastor Bowlen.
Yes.
Just a quick question. So the 58 members of your, of your Right to Life Group?
Yes.
Are they just spread out all the way across our community, from all walks?
Yes.
And you guys have meetings, like?
A monthly meeting.
You have a monthly meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. I was just curious.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if you'd allow me to finish up research before we have Parks Committee meeting, I want to give you the information we do find.
Can you let me know when you're ready for that?
It'll take a little while.
Okay. All right. So we'll table this until Gray can give some more information on the parks. And then we'll have the Park Committee meeting in a heartbeat.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Citizens Business, Purple Chamber of Commerce Police Department.
I'm going to stand in the center, if you don't mind. Madam Mayor, Council, thank you for your time, Chamber of Commerce. At our November meeting, which was our annual meeting, we gave away some recognition to different parts of our community and how they serve our community best. Chief Thompson, would you please come forward?
Yes, sir.
Chief Thompson, on behalf of the Newcastle Executive Chamber of Commerce, you have supported us in many of our different realms. You've supported this community in an outstanding way. We would like to recognize you with this plaque.
Thank you.
Moving on to Mayor...
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the City Council, School Board, or County Commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Number one, City Sidewalks. I asked, I talked with Gray Stump, and I asked Stacy to put this on the agenda due to the citizen who has made a complaint before about the sidewalks and a while ago. And then there was cones put in those areas, and the cones were removed, and she actually fell, fell and tripped and had some major injuries. So Gray was kind of looking into what it would take to work on the sidewalks there.
Madam Mayor, thank you. That area was on our list of concrete, if we had not been able to find a contractor to work on for us. Alternatively, we found out that black burn foundation repair can lift slabs of concrete now. We met with them, visited with them, and they came up with a quote. We looked at all areas of the sidewalk on the three blocks main, there were an inch or greater at a level, or higher or lower than that curb to basically raise the sidewalks up and re-level them. The quote, I believe you have in front of you, is for the areas that we identified as needing lifted. There were several areas, mainly around the light holes. And the total would be $10,170.19 to raise these sidewalks up to where they would be leveled again, anything an inch or greater.
That's, that's pretty cheap, and very easy if somebody gets hurt, I don't...
Well, we were looking at probably spending around $20,000 just to have the concrete removed and rebuild. So this is a less expensive alternative. I do know of one place that had this done, I was kind of watching it for a while to see how it held up. That one's actually in the driveway with semis running across it, and it actually held up fairly well.
Is that the one out at the gateway, the new? Yeah, I watched that, watched the same outfit, and they did raise it, and it was, they had like a three-inch raise on that one.
Yeah. So I was kind of watching it while we were trying to find a contractor to replace the concrete, couldn't find one. This is probably a better alternative, I guess, to repairing the concrete. It'd be less invasive, that's for sure.
In the meantime, can we put some cones back on some of those that are really bad?
Yeah.
I know it doesn't look very pretty, but...
Well, that's not the problem. They get taken, they get stolen. That's what happened with the last one. We've had, we drew like six cones in there. One didn't even last one night. That's, that's the problem.
What do they do with them?
What's that?
What do they do with the cones? They just...
They put them on top of people's vehicles, on top of people's houses. I, I don't know. We go, we, we purchase anywhere from 25 to 50 candles and cones here. So that's how many we have stolen this year.
Is a project like this, Mr. Stone, does that work? Do we have the room in your budget for this?
Yes, with decreasing the project, the paving project that we had planned, we had actually budgeted $350,000, and the bid come in at $192,000. So we do have some extra money in the budget to do this.
Okay. I think this $10,000, as Ann was saying, is a lot better than if it was City of Newcastle two last year.
We also, we've got a problem over at San Daniel Park, it was on the list of concrete to be repaired. There's a lip at the bridge abutments over there. There's one that's over three and a half inches high. So we also looked at a quote for that, a separate quote out of the Parks budget, and it was $5,802.96. So about half a foot, almost half a foot, that one has been...
So was that with...
We'd like to do both projects.
Is that with black burns as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we just haven't, we haven't quote both projects separately. We would actually pay for the one at the park out of the Parks budget, the one on Main Street out of the Streets budget.
Do we have a project summary on that one?
What's that?
Do we have a project summary on that one?
No, no. He just sent it to me, and I just, I got it about five o'clock.
What was the total cost, then?
For that one there was $5,802.96 for the bridge. That's been down for a long time. It has. We've, we've been trying to get that one done for the last couple, three years.
Does this be in the spring?
Yes. It's too cold right now to do it, so we have to do it this spring. If we get it on their schedule now, it'll be, should be early spring.
I think, oh, should we do it?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say, like, I have, are we saying yes to vote? The $10,170 and then the... Yes. Okay. And the $5,802. Just making sure.
And I have something to add. Madam Mayor, I, I met with the lady that fell down, too. I saw the, the city shop folks over there talking to her. And I thought she was pretty decent to deal with.
And I thought she was pretty decent to deal with, given the extent of the injuries that she received. So I think this is definitely the more cost-effective measure to take to take care of the problem.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Moving on to old business. Third reading of ordinance number eight, series 2023. Ordinance number eight, 2023, an ordinance regulating permit requirements for entry removal in connection to manholes as designated in section 26-27(c) within the town of Newcastle. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Newcastle, Western County, Wyoming. Section 26-27(c) of the Newcastle, Wyoming municipal code be amended as follows. Amending section 26-27(c), sanitary sewers and building sewers and connections of the same to the public sewer. Application and permit to connect requirements and penalty.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number eight, series 2023, on third reading.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion?
We have a lot of similar ordinances with, with some verbiage that's, verbiage that's similar. So we kind of have our work cut out for us, or attorney Hughes does. So this is a good start to trying to fix some of those ordinances.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Pass on the 18th. All right. Moving on to department head reports. City Clerk Pressure, Stacy Higginson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All I have is just to remind the council that our next meeting will be actually on a Tuesday after the January 1st holiday. And then our next meeting in January will also be on a Tuesday after President's Day. And then we are pretty much wrapped up on audit. And they would like to do their audit presentation January 16th. The second meeting in January, starting at 6:00 PM.
You have some time on the mic here?
Absolutely.
And that's all I have? Any questions for City Clerk? Moving on to Public Works Supervisor, Gray Stumpf.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, Jesse Rado has successfully completed his well operator's license. I recommend him for a 50 cent raise for completing his license effective November 28th, 2023.
I would move that Jesse Rado get his 50 cent raise for completing his, his well operator's license effective November 28th, 2023.
Okay. We have a motion in second. Any further discussion?
It's good that we're getting some more people certified.
Yes, it is.
Well, it's a positive thing.
Yes.
Yeah, congratulations to Jesse for passing.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you, Council. We received today the 2024 environmental monitoring for landfill number two. It's up just a little over $1,000 from last year. It's $24,413.57. This is with American Engineering Testing. This is who we normally have doing so. More so information. We don't really get a choice in this matter. He used it, we will monitor it, so. This week, we do have two bid openings. One for the pump station improvements project, 1:00 PM on Thursday. And then the Seventh Avenue Water and Sewer Improvements on, at 2:00 on, on Thursday also. Other than that, does anybody have any questions?
Yes, sir. Have you heard anything from Weston County Solid Waste District about how far they're, they're getting? I see a lot of activity over there.
Actually, I was out there. The contractor wanted to, wanted to borrow some stuff, so I went out and met him. They're coming along. They got their, their hole dug. They're working on getting it sealed. Right now, liner in and sealed. Haven't seen a lot of movement on, on buildings yet. But I'm going to attend their next solid waste meeting. Start discussing transferring to the compost area, stuff like that to them. So we can make provisions, plans to do that.
So no hard dates or anything yet, or no, no timeframes?
No, not yet. Kind of depends on construction season, I would imagine.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll find out more and let you know.
Anything on surplus items yet on whatever the auction?
Bid's open right now.
Is that what?
Yeah. Bid is open, open right now. They started receiving bids, so.
Anything else? Moving on to Police Chief, Derek Council.
It's better than I thought it was going to be when I was thinking about the split.
Yeah. Well, when I talked to Alicia a couple of weeks ago, we were looking at maybe seven tops. But we're up to nine, potentially 10. We had a new kid move in that might be wrestling as well and joining the team now. You know, so a little bit behind the, behind the start. So that's going to put us in a, in a problem when it comes to duels. You know, we're not going to win a lot of duels because we don't have anybody over 160 pounds. So, you know, we're going to give up 40 points.
Right.
In every duel, I mean. So obviously, it's going to be tough to make that up. We do have some good returners.
You get a couple of baddies off the couch and have them put the pop tarts down and...
Right?
You can give people a run for the money.
Yeah.
Probably going to get in trouble for that one too, but you know.
Yeah, you might.
Come on, Evvies, get out there and, and go wrestle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Give you the calls for service first. Newcastle Police Department, 130. And this is since the 4th of December through today's date. Weston County Sheriff's Office, 80. Upton Police Department, 30. Newcastle Volunteer Fire Department, 6. Newcastle Ambulance, 25. Upton Ambulance, 5. Upton Volunteer Fire Department, 3. Weston County Fire Protection District, 10. Year to date, we have, shows 3,173, but it's actually more than that. I just looked at it today. I'm not sure why that, I'm reflecting a little bit. That's for the Police Department. Next on my list is the K-9. I wanted to let everybody know that I talked to the Weston County Peace Officers Association. They made a motion at their meeting to handle the funding for our K-9 project. So they'll provide all, everything that the K-9 needs for the most part, so. I know we talked at length last meeting about the program and what it would involve. So I don't know if I need a motion from you guys or not to implement the program or there's not really funding coming out of the city's budget other than handler compensation, which will be negligible.
Yes, it definitely could be one.
No, Your Honor, I've moved that we go along with Chief Thompson's K-9 project as, as he has described it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, so Chief, you're going to try to handle the overtime by allowing for some comp or something? Would you explain?
Yeah. So I think, and especially being that the dog's going to be with a school resource officer, there's a little more flexibility in that schedule. It's not as rigid that you have to be here from 6:00 in the morning to 6:00 at night kind of thing. So I think I'm going to try to cut that back to a seven and a half hour day, five days a week. Or a lot of Fridays, they get out of school early. So you'll have the four eight-hour days and then you'll have a short day. So we consider all a little early that day, compensate that way. So we're not going over budget. So we, we compensate for that half an hour a day like that instead of actually paying it out in overtime. If that makes sense.
Yeah. I think that's a good plan personally. Appreciate that.
I like that. A whole lot of good ones.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you. Last time we talked about the vehicle purchases. And I visited the two local banks in town. Pinnacle Bank offered us a rate of 1% below prime, which right now, prime's eight and a half for the lease purchase on those vehicles. First Northern Bank offered us a rate of 6%, being that we're tax exempt for the lease purchase. And the dealer was between eight and a half and 9%. So honestly, going local, we're saving significant amount of money if we're using that lease purchase program. I guess it just makes sense to me to go with the lowest bidder, so to say, in this situation.
I see what that means.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would move that we accept First Northern's percentage rate for handling of the, the lease agreement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion?
I'm glad we can find a good rate.
Especially nowadays.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you for that. Just an update on the Joint Powers Board and trying to keep everybody in the loop. Today, we received an email that they have the accounts made. So the city's check should be deposited, I believe, tomorrow or unless it was deposited today. We have had several people interested in the director position. That's the position we're trying to fill first in order to have that person take over some of the administrative role of this instead of the board members having to do everything. So we, we have had some interest in that, which is promising. We're, we just finished up the job advertisement for the dispatcher positions. We're going to distribute that as well as we can. Over the coming next few days, we're working on the retirement insurance portion still. We had some trouble getting in touch with the state insurance person. Haven't been too good at calling us back. I think there's some family issue going on with the lady that handles that stuff. So we're kind of hung up on that. But hopefully, we can get these details worked out and start transitioning employees into the Joint Powers Board here shortly. We have, we had a meeting with Motorola last week in the midst of the evacuation that they were talking about installation dates in February for the equipment in the new dispatch center. That kind of threw us for a loop. I thought it was supposed to be this month, but they apparently had to physically see the furniture in the dispatch center before they would give us a date. I didn't quite understand that, but I was like, told you it was going to be installed in December. Why, why couldn't we hold a December date? But once, once the furniture was actually installed, then they were able to give us a date, I guess, so. But the furniture is installed. I think I told you that last meeting or maybe I hadn't, but... That's kind of where we're at on that. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about that?
We're making more forward progress.
Yes.
So eventually, we're going to get there.
I think so. Yeah, I think so. It seems like we're not sometimes, but yeah, we're, we're getting there.
Any, any choices on the grand opening party yet?
The grand opening of the Joint Powers Board or the Police Department?
Both.
Oh, both? Well...
Big party.
We'll have to find some funding for that, but maybe, maybe in the next couple of months.
Just kidding.
That's all I have.
Any other questions for Chief?
I have one. I was asked the other day what was happening with wrong ones vehicles parked in the street.
In the street?
Around the street, up the alley, so people can't have a hard time getting through there.
Through the alley portion or through the street?
Well, they live on an alley, I think.
Yeah. So we hadn't, we haven't done anything as far as, I mean, we, we addressed some other issues with that property. But I guess I hadn't been made aware of anybody not being able to access through that alley. So we really hadn't pushed that issue at all. Is there somebody that wants to come forward and chat with me?
I told them to, but apparently they didn't.
They didn't? Okay. Yeah, we haven't, we haven't pushed that issue any farther. I mean, we did address some issues with that particular property, but we haven't done anything as far as their parking, I guess, goes, so.
Are we in, in, did we enough of town with your?
With the ordinance portion, so. So I, those forms that I passed out, I sent those out to be printed. I have not gotten those back yet. I'm kind of dragging my feet waiting on that, but if we don't get somewhere, I'm going to have to do something different. So things seem to be moving kind of slow for some reason in that. I sent several things out to print and I haven't gotten back yet, so. Not sure what the deal is there, but that's what I was waiting on. And then we'll get everybody going on that because there's a lot of, a lot of properties that are in contention. It's going to be honestly a rather large undertaking.
Yes, I know. But it needs to get started, yeah.
Yeah, we're all going to, we're all going to feel some pressure.
Yes, we are, all of us.
Yep.
I'm willing.
Any other questions for Chief? Moving on to, thank you. Moving on to Attorney, Don Wood.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last week, I reached out to the entities involved for the water contracts and the water agreements. I believe emails were sent with all of those agreements to the proper people to be able to look them over and sign. The only response I've had to date is from Gray James at the Housing Authority. And he said he would look it over, but other than that, that is the only person who's responded thus far. We have filed the UBC precast entry of default and a request for setting so that I can go in and argue exactly how much the damages will be under that contract. I can't make any promises as to what the judge will see. You know, what is merited in terms of costs, consequential damages. So that's in motion. That's the only update I can give you on that specifically because kind of calculating damages is more or less up to a judge than it is to me, so. And I'll do my best, but that's up to someone else, so. One other update I wanted to give. I will be on vacation from December 27th to January 4th. So I probably will need... Stacy, you said it was on the second that we will be having our first meeting, correct?
Yes.
So I will probably need our tech person here to help me out. We can probably do that. And that's all I have, Madam.
Any questions for Attorney Wood? Moving on to citizens committee reports. Just a reminder, I did send an email out to the Parks Committee December 28th at 6:00 PM at Pinnacle Bank to meet with the damage buckets in regards to the pub bike skate park and tall grass with the information that I received from him. And that's all I have for standing.
Did you say Pinnacle Bank?
Yes, at 6:00. Thank you. And we'll go first, um, during the meeting, um, so we can go and they can finish their, their meeting. Any other standing committee reports? Um, any other business?
I have something, Madam Mayor. So we didn't, it didn't get brought up during, uh, the, um, course of the rest of the meeting, but it sounds like, uh, um, public works supervisors from had gotten ahold of Carl Brown, the, the, uh, third-party consultant for the rates. And, uh, he was just asking around for, um, some preliminary information so that he could start. But then that also brings up the question of whether we should have him also do the wastewater rates while he's, uh, doing the water rates. And then that'll save, um, you know, a public works supervisor and the clerk, um, treasurer some legwork if they can get some of that information upfront. Um, so that he can, uh, design a better rate for our, uh, our wastewater. Because I've been getting a lot of complaints from some citizens about how their wastewater rates are higher than their water rate and they have concerns about that.
So what's the cost to add this to his bill?
It's the same cost as the water rate study, so seven thousand forty-five dollars.
So we double it.
We just doubled our expenses?
But the thing is, is with a well-designed rate, um, it's gonna pay for itself, um, almost right away when you, um, get the revenue from the rates that, um, people are paying. So the first month, we more than pay for the study. It's just one of those situations where sometimes it costs money to make money.
I thought you said we were gonna get a discount if we did it all at once.
Um, so we are getting a discount, um, that, uh, the seven thousand forty-five uh, dollars is a discounted rate from what we normally have to pay since our community is a member of the, um, Wyoming Association of Rural Water Systems. So we are getting a discounted rate. I think normally it goes for like eight or nine thousand dollars for the study. But we're getting it for a little bit cheaper since we're members of, um, wars.
We should go across all three enterprise funds if we're doing these, just to make sure we're getting the rates crossed, each one of them on water sewer and garbage when we're looking at all this. If we're raising rates on all three and if we're just kind of picking and choosing just in water rate and then we add the, the sewer wastewater to that. Um, I think this needs to go across all three enterprise funds.
And so when we initially started having this conversation, um, this spring, I came in and, and told the council about, um, Mr. Brown and his, um, rate study ability and and, and we talked about, um, doing it for garbage as well. Um, but, um, you know, we were all kind of upset about what we thought was happening with the budget and everything, and so, um, that initial request, we didn't find it favorable to the council because it was, I think it was around twenty thousand dollars for the study. So, uh, are you suggesting that we look at the garbage rate as well?
Yeah, I think if we're, you know, if we're not only getting heat feedback from customers on water and sewer and we're raising the rates for the garbage that we use, I think it's, if we're doing the rate study, we just need to do it across the game of everything we raised on rates to show that progress what we needed.
Well, I, I agree. That's, that's why I brought it up, uh, last spring, but, uh, yeah, I, uh, I agree.
So does your boy do garbage too?
He's not my boy, counsel. Mr. Brown does do, uh, garbage, he's doing.
Madam Mayor, from a, in his, uh, in his proposal, the garbage would be a little less. It'd be six thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars. To include sanitation.
Little over twenty grand for the whole thing.
That's why we're doing budget process with that.
That's why everybody got Larry was because of the twenty thousand dollar price tag. But I think it would have saved us a little bit of headaches in the beginning if we would have just done the rate studies.
Water under the bridge.
Yeah, we're, we're good now, but I, I agree. Well, I don't know a lot for us, so we can, so, but I just.
How about this? I move that we go ahead with this project and we do the water sewer garbage through Mr. whom?
Carl Brown.
Brown.
That man.
I second.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion?
Okay, now, Greg, when you said that before on that water, or that contract that you saved so much money on, so we can kind of pay for this too?
Uh, that was a street's budget.
Oh. Dang.
I think we can probably make work, um, one way or another. Kind of depends on how expensive this gets out back here.
Oh, okay.
Well, I think it's great that the council decided to do this and, uh, I look forward to finding out what the result is.
I do too. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Snuck it away in there. Did do it.
All right, any other business? Claims against the city dated December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to pay the claims, Mrs. City Day, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
I second.
We have a motion in second. All in, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Can I get a motion to leave the regular, um, city council meeting to enter into executive session reference, uh, Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four zero five A B triple I consideration of gifts and donations. And then Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four zero five A B double I real estate. And then Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four zero five A double I personal.
I'm on.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, moving into executive session at seven fifty-seven. Thank you, everyone.